Okay, it is a little after 6 o'clock. Thank you Denise. Okay, it's a little after 6 o'clock so I'd like to call this joint work session between the Silverton City Council and the Silver Falls School Board to order please. Just a quick note for anybody watching on Scan TV. We got a note today that there are -- the broadcast line from the community center to Wave Broadband Hub has not been repaired. So the quality of the video that you see tonight might not be up to par. So just keep that in mind. It is going to be repaired. And if the quality of the video is bad, we are getting a good recording of this so it'll be on the, I suppose, it'll be on the district's website at a later date and I imagine on the city council's or the city's website also. So please, thank you for your patience and that's what's going on in case it's a bad quality on the video. Okay, we're going to go and do some introductions first. I know we try to do this every couple, or a couple times a year, but we have some new board members and new city council members. So let's start down here. Why don't you just introduce yourself and your role, I guess.
Dana Smith, Silverton City Council.
Erin Cook, Silver Falls School Board.
Rick Lewis, Mayor.
Tim Roth, School Board.
Pat Palmer, City Council President.
Wally Lierman, School Board.
Erv Stadley, Silver Falls School Board.
Lori Carter, Silverton City Council.
Jason Frallinger, Silverton City Council.
Todd White, Silver Falls School Board.
Jim Sears, Silverton City Council.
Roland Galloway, School Board.
Yeah, go ahead Bob.
Bob Willoughby, City Manager.
Andy Valando, Superintendent.
Danny Stevens, Assistant Superintendent.
And Denise. And Denise Childs, School Board Secretary. And that's a little more publicity than she's comfortable.
And a little less a job description.
Yeah, very much so. Okay, we're going to jump right into some discussion items. There are a number of agreements between the city of Silverton and Silver Falls School District. And when Rick and I and Bob and Andy met to kind of discuss what we're going to talk about at this meeting, we thought it'd be a good idea just to have a kind of a review of all those agreements. So everybody kind of knows what we're going on, what's going on and kind of the good working relationship that we have between our two entities. So Bob and Andy, would you guys want to take this, take it over from here and just give a review of those?
Sure. We actually put a brief summary there of the formal agreements, most of the formal agreements that we have, formal meetings, writing and with something on file. That indicates some kind of agreement by both the school boards or the school district and the city. And we have, we have copies of those agreements, each one of these, rather than handing those out or going over those in detail tonight. We really thought it was just as important for you to know the multiple number of agreements that we do have and the importance of those agreements. Some of them have been in place for many years. So just looking down the list. School Resource Officer, while it's relatively new for the current agreement, there was an agreement for many years with the School Resource Officer in this school district, between the school district and the city. Current agreement was established last fall as a two-year agreement and provides the School Resource Officer that actually includes all of the schools within the district rather than just the city schools, which had been the case in the past. So from a school district perspective, that's been a huge bonus and actually a huge asset for us on many fronts. We also have Scan TV agreements, Video Production Services Agreement. That agreement was renewed last spring, I believe, for the next three or five years. I don't recall, a multi-year agreement. And that's been a longstanding agreement between the city and the school district as well, providing the services that you have here this evening, to the same services provided to the school board for their meetings, the work sessions, planning commission meetings, I believe, and a variety of meetings throughout the year. Again, very good relationship that relies upon the equipment essentially provided by the city and relies upon the services that are provided by really a curricular program that's housed in Silverton High School with the efforts of Gary Marchum. So really a very nice agreement as well. Bob, Community Survey.
Yeah, I will do that one. That relates to a number of council goals that they adopted for this year that had to do with engaging the public, creating a vision statement, doing some strategic planning. And one of the action items that they have talked about and are included in those goals is to restart the community survey that used to be done when I first got here four years ago. I don't think it was done last year, but I think it's only been done once since I've been here, so it probably wasn't done the last two. In the past, the school district has participated in that, paid appropriate share of the cost of the survey, which my recollection is the University of Oregon did this survey for about $20,000. We developed the questions and then they did the analysis and gave us a report. If there were 30 questions and the school district had five questions, then they get appropriate share of the cost. I think the question was if we do another community surveys, the school district interested in getting some feedback on some community questions that you want to include in that survey. And I think we were doing, well, we haven't really talked about it yet, but I'm not sure if that'll be done this fiscal year before July 1st or whether it'll be done next year. We haven't gotten any specific, haven't had any specific discussion about the timing. Yeah, we're, one of, another one of the council's goals has to do with transportation planning and updating our transportation master plan. So this item 2B came out of that process. We have hired a consultant to do the update of the master plan. Included in their contract is hiring a sub-consultant who is expert in, first of all, developing a safe route to schools program, then helping the city obtain a grant to actually put those, build those improvements. The city doesn't have a lot of money for new streets, new sidewalks, road crossings. Those things are usually done by developers when development occurs. And we have older neighborhoods where that didn't happen. We have people creating and trying to find ways to fund improvements. So that will be part of this process. The school district would agree to share the cost of the safe routes to school part of our transportation update. That was going to already be underway, but we decided to wait until, that all of this ought to be done when Slater Campus re-opens. So that they're doing the study with, you know, the permanent location of the schools. And so we delayed a few months. So instead of being done shortly after the end of, beginning of next year, calendar year, it'll probably look back two or three months, but the school district will be involved in that process as well.
Excuse me Andy, I should have said along the way if anybody has any questions, just pipe up. Go ahead.
It's my understanding as well, in addition to what Bob has shared with the Safe Routes to School Program, that our participation or partnership with the city in this should help us qualify for state transportation grant dollars with the Safe Routes to School Grant for potential future access. And if there wasn't any cooperation by the school district and the city to work together on the Safe Routes to School Program, then there would be, there would be no option to obtain those grant dollars. So we see that as a pretty significant investment of time and some money in order to get this passed. The next one, many of you are familiar with, maybe some of you may have even had kids at high school that are athletes on the swim team, but we've used the Silverton Swimming Pool for a number of years and rent the pool, essentially time of the pool during the swim team season, and are very appreciative of that. We have a number of facility uses that occurred, including use of this facility for school board meetings. So thank you very much to the city for continuing to allowing that. That's been the case for many years. And from a reciprocating side, if the city has advanced our activities that they want to bolster or hold using, let's say, the main auditorium at Silverton High School, we reciprocate the same and just provide it available to the city simply because that's the right thing to do. So we appreciate that. City parks, again, I think there's just some mutual understanding and access to park space by the school district as necessary. School facilities, of course, we have multiple facilities, not just around the city, but throughout the district that are accessed through facility rental agreement forms and so forth to the general public. We have, we should share with you that since the completion of Silverton High School, the community use of that facility, especially over the last four or five years, has skyrocketed. And as it should, I think there's some, of course, some real value in the public being able to access that facility. So it has to be regulated. We do have a facility assistant who helps us organize all of that, rental agreements, insurance, scheduling, and putting that information on the website as well. But that's, that in combination with all the other schools in the district, as you can imagine, make our facilities really a, quite an active place for the community. And again, as it should be. The last, or letter G, the Green Space Maintenance Agreement does relate to facilities, and this was established a number of years ago as well. And that's an agreement by the school district to work with the city in providing green space access for a variety of community needs, whether it be soccer, or baseball, or softball, or other access for community needs. And that continues to be in place today. Part of the agreement by the city a number of years ago was to provide some annual funding to the school district to help offset the cost for green space maintenance, fertilizer and mowing and labor to assist in maintaining those green spaces. And that continues to this day. And I think that agreement works very well. In addition to that, there is an addendum to the agreement that actually refers to water usage on two sites. And those two sites are the Slater Campus and Mark Twain Green Space. And those two sites get access to the city water for irrigation purposes in the summertime when the rest of the, rest of the facilities, or excuse me, no city water is used in any other facilities in the city or in the district. It's important to note too, because people ask about it, about the volume of water that it takes to irrigate green spaces at Silverton High School, which as you can imagine is quite large. That's entirely irrigated by a very large well on the high school campus. No city water is used to irrigate Silverton High School. So just wanted to point those out to the bottom of you, if you had anything else with the green space or use of the green space. And then the final ones that we have here, at least again from a formal agreement standpoint, is the High School and Slater Campus Development Agreement. This was established in 2009, during the construction, Phase 2 construction of Silverton High School. And again, through some cooperative efforts with the city of Silverton and agreement, I should say, with the construction of Silverton High School, knowing that essentially the former high school campus at Slater was being shut down at that point in time anyway, that the assistant development fees related to traffic for Silverton High School were not realized at that time, but would be realized with the development agreement, based on the development agreement at a time in the future when either the Slater Campus was reactivated or when there was any additional activity occurring at Silverton High School that would cause the campus to be larger, more parking and things of that sort. So since then, since 2009, clearly over the last couple of years, and it's one of your topics tonight, we have some additional activity occurring at the Slater Street Campus. And so as a result, a portion of those SDCs are due and will be paid to the city as per the development agreement, which really took some, I think, creative, thoughtful energy to really take a look at the whole picture at the time, knowing that we're moving Silverton High School literally two blocks away with the understanding by the school district that we had a maximum number of people that could use the Slater Campus at any time, any developments in that area would result in some SDCs that we'd be responsible for. So that agreement in and of itself, I think certainly a huge purpose, especially as we're in the position we are now with the reactivation of the Schleter Campus.
One, just one comment I would make on that. We have done enough planning on the streets by the new high school and Slater Campus to know what the fix is for the impact that's going to be caused by a new high school and the reopening of Slater Campus. And that involves some road improvements on Pine and extending Pine to Brown and then making a new connection to the stoplight that was that sea of water. And that's about a, Jason, how much? $2 million. So the contribution we will get from the school district is going to be very significant, but it's just a small percentage of the total cost of that fix that we're going to need as soon as we can build it. City's purchasing the old Squarefield lumber site. We just, I just signed a purchase agreement and we're doing our new diligence now. Hopefully, we will soon be, and hopefully we will close on that sometime in September. And within four years, do Phase 1 of that project, which would be a new police facility. I'm hoping that as part of that project, we can fund the improvements in that first couple of blocks on Pine and Brown and then with the contribution from the school district, get that project done sooner than what otherwise would be possible. Because we don't have any funding for new streets. As I mentioned before, streets are built by developers when development happens. And that's the importance of the SDCs that we deferred. So it's really critical to that project that we have that contribution and then that we find other sources of funds to get that built as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you Bob and Andy. We'll move, or have time for some questions or comments Dana.
Can I, yeah, I had, back on the Green Space Maintenance Agreement, you were talking about the water use agreement at Slater and Mark Twain. And I just wanted to verify that that irrigation is strictly on the ball field, or on the play fields, right? It's not just on nice green lawns. Thank you.
And you see that difference, especially on the Slater Campus in the summertime, you see the north end fields are green and the south end green spaces.
Yeah, I, thanks Tim. I just wanted to chime in on the same topic for those on either group that didn't, doesn't know with respect to the Green Space Agreement, which was originally and presumably still mostly focused towards maintenance at the Silverton High School. It's hard for me not to call it Pine Street. Basically, when that was being developed, there was not going to be irrigation on the entire play surface or adequate sub-drainage. And so the city partnered with the school district. I believe the figure was we split $127,000 at the time that helped take that to a much higher level of play surface than we would find at any of the other facilities in town. And that remains to be one of the driving forces for us to be so involved in maintaining it, is we help build something that's not your average baseball, football field. And so it's incumbent on us to help take care of that, in my opinion.
We also contributed to the cost of a tractor.
Correct.
Using to maintain those facilities. I think we did half the cost of the tractor. That was a one time. Tractor may still be in use.
I hope so. Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yes. Lori Carter.
I was just wondering, does, will the city pay SDCs on the new development, on the new city council, or the police station? Will that be a fund transfer?
Well, whether we, like the street improvement I was talking about, whether we do that as an SDC payment or as just part of the cost of the project, we would pay it either way or it'd just be which pocket do you put it in. But I don't believe the city pays SDC charges. City projects are exempt. They're exempt.
Okay Erin.
Yeah, I just wanted to come back to the School Resource Officer and Chief Falls Elmer is here, so I don't, I just wanted to see, hey, how's it going? You know, it's been several months.
Police Department's, I think it's going really good. It started on January 1st. We got the SRO up and running and I have the School Resource Officer put together a report we handed out to you guys. And so basically, just over 10 weeks, we've already, he's handled 123 calls.
Wow, that's great. It's been busy.
There's a pie chart on his back showing the breakdown.
Thank you.
Big Jeff looks a little sunburned as we discussed that actually happened last night. Just to make this easy, thank you.
I thought it was in Palm Springs. Oh, that was the month before.
Hey Jeff, do you have any breakdown of what the call load was like last year and the year before without the SRO? Has it gone up or was it just a matter of?
I don't have those numbers because it was handled by patrol, so many different people. Since starting the program, we have him keeping his numbers separate. They actually create a CAD under the SRO or the SRO. So we're exactly these numbers, but I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what they were before. But this shows you that he's been very busy.
Another question along those lines, has having a resource officer helped you in policing the community?
Yes, it's helped because our day shift officers have not had to be at the school dealing with some of these things and being able to now to be out in the community dealing with some neighborhood problems or traffic problems.
I think a lot of these too, we see kind of some of the negative, you know, side of things, but I know when we, we wanted it to have this and approved it, it was, I saw it as, and much of us on the board saw it as a very positive impact within our district. And so I would assume that also there's a lot of positive inflect, influence that this, our SRO is doing and, you know, making relationships and kind of keeping that bond of, you know, the police are here to help us and they're our allies, right?
Yes.
So I'm sure a lot of that's going on. I don't know if you have any to elaborate a little bit on that.
But I have JJ, he just talks, he tracks the different things he does at each school within the district. And so at the end of the year, end of this 10-year, he'll share with you the kinds of things like Evergreen, he assisted with the lockdown drill, you know, read the book Stranger Danger and did bicycle rodeo at Scottsdale. And so he's been in every building every month. The first part of the time he was there was just beginning to build relationships, being out there at lunchtime, with parents dropping off and picking up. So the idea of having a police presence in the building is not uncomfortable or awkward for kids and their parents. And he's been doing a great job in every building in the district, so.
Great.
We're really pleased with what he's doing.
Thanks.
Ms. Chair, I want, I just want to cite a couple, just very quick examples that are less criminally related and again more related to the question you're asking about too here. We did have him respond not only to the incident at Evergreen School about a stranger in the area, literally a person that's coming up to the fence, you may have heard of her, asking questions of kids, but also sharing information with parents and staff about how best to address that situation, revisiting our protocols. We've had some pretty unfortunate incidences across the district, a couple of schools in the district, of course, with the tragic death a few weeks ago of a student and a teacher that's been charged. He had a role in helping to sort of facilitate that process after the fact. And just this morning, JJ was up at Silvercrest School at Falls, helping students and staff members with our grief counselors, working through a tragedy incident that occurred up there with fire and the loss of a mother and child. And one of the students from Silvercrest School was in that fire as well. And so the police presence, rather than being, say, a crisis response presence from a grief counseling standpoint, was there again more just for that purpose, understanding that law enforcement is involved, we're here to help, we're here to support you. And based on input from Jamie McCarty, the principal at Silvercrest, he was very well received out there today.
Good, good.
Is he involved in threat assessments as well?
Yes, he is.
Okay. That's good information. Yeah, Jim.
I had a quick question, back to Slater Campus and water use. I was wondering how the artificial turf installation's going and whether that would reduce the need for water?
The answer is yes. It will reduce the need for water because that won't be the water. It's better not be water than.
Yeah.
The turf installation and improvements to McGinnis Field is scheduled to begin around June 15th and will take the bulk of the summer. It'll actually occur about the same time as the first activation of the campus and all the work going on there that's already begun. So we plan to have that fully installed by mid to late August. Does that mean it's up in operation?
Great, that's pretty exciting.
It is. Yeah. And as a gift from the Community and the School District, that resources.
Thank you Andy.
Any other comments or questions from anybody on any of these topics? Okay.
Ms. Chair, if I can just share one more thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe a couple of notes here about some informal sort of relationship activities that we do. Things like the senior cleanup day where the seniors from the high school work with the city staff this year. We're active members of the local EMAC group, Andy serves on that, community emergency management advisory council. We appreciate the city's cooperative efforts, especially with the police department with our homecoming parade every year. And their efforts in helping to even change routes and do some different things in the last year or two. We've worked with the police department and our district as well in trainings on our facilities, in our facilities. And we, of course, Andy just mentioned a little bit, with some lockdown, lockout activities at many of our schools, especially in the city, that we have a police presence there for that as well. And that just scratches the surface. There are quite a few informal things that we do with the city and just really generally appreciate your overall support.
Thank you Andy, very true. Okay, moving on to our next topic, possibility of a Parks and Recreation District. Bob, do you want to take this or?
Well, the other council panel wants to start this session.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, sure.
The chair of Parks and Recreation Committee has talked about this concept.
Okay.
So almost three years ago, the council appointed a citizen-driven Parks and Rec Task Force, like Bob said. I think we had 12 or 15 members, can't remember exactly. Those people essentially were charged with looking at all of the city's Parks and Rec facilities and weighing whether we would be in better shape to keep things at a status quo or to stop developing certain things and put our money in other things or look at any creative solution. And with just two in opposition, the task force agreed that the most logical thing was to take some steps to explore a Parks and Rec district that would be larger than the city, but presumably much smaller than the school district. In fact, in a perfect world, it'd be big enough to offset the current city residents' financial burden, but not big enough that we would run the risk of losing that in a ballot if we were to put that out to the voters. So that recommendation was made to the council a couple of years ago and for various reasons, it hasn't gone anywhere yet, but it's still an active conversation. And it definitely impacts the pool, pool funding primarily, but it also would impact the school district as some of the usage that's now being managed by the city's part in conjunction with the school district would presumably be handled by a new district with the school district rather than the city. So that's, sound about right Bob? Anything I'd left out?
I would add that the current funding for the pool is a five-year special levy. We're in year three. So in two years, we have to do something to find permanent, hopefully permanent financing for the pool. Two options that the task force looked at was another five-year levy, but that's not permanent financing. And cities that have tried to fund police services or specific services based on a series of five-year levies may get one or two pass, but eventually there's a time when the voters aren't willing to approve that and your program has to go away. In the case of a pool, it may have to become a seasonal pool or we'd have to really look at how we were going to fund that permanently. Without that levy, the cost of the pool would really be a problem for the general fund. So something needs to be done at least on the pool in the next two years. I think the reason, the idea of a special district hasn't gone anywhere yet is because we really need to evaluate whether there's any merit to putting out a proposal and how big it should be and what the voters in that district are contemplating value in either parks or recreation or pools. You need a scientific survey, you need a consultant. you a good, uh, with some degree of accuracy estimate of what the possibility of passing. There's no point in just putting a levy on the ballot and, um, and then having the voters, you know, say no. We need some idea of whether there's any merit to the idea first and, uh, so, um, we're putting together a budget for next year and, and hopefully we'll have some funds to do that survey so that we can go forward with something. The alternative is another five-year levy, which is really just temporary financing if it passes.
Um, Bob, I would add, at least in my personal opinion, we're very close, if not there already for the window closing for any option except another five-year levy. So, we, in my, my opinion, we're looking at that and then what we do after that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
A question for Bob, what's the life expectancy on the pool cover at this point? How many more years?
Well, if they told us like five years, we actually included some money in the five-year levy to replace the cover at the end of the five-year period. Uh, but the cover we had on before that lasted ten or eleven years. That wasn't real good shape at the end, but I think we can keep the existing cover until we have some idea of what our long-range plan is for how we're going to fund the pool and Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Yeah.
Well, we've been talking about it for so long and we're, and generally in agreement that we need to do it, but why is it, what is it we need to do to push it off the ground?
The special district idea?
Yes.
Uh, we need to, I need the council to authorize a contract with a consultant who can do focus groups and some, uh, surveys to tell us what the community values as far as pools and parks and recreation and what area they, they do value those things.
But, well, we're doing the survey now, which kind of is, is in the general, um, gives that kind of general thing, but again, like somebody said, one of the comments, um, kind of, it, it just, of course, you're going to agree with everything on the survey because we all value education and, and recreation and everything else, but it didn't come down to the nitty-gritty, are you willing to pay for this? So, I'm kind of concerned about, and I think the school district, I hear this so often, the, the Eugene, the debacle of the Eugene Field lawn levy loss was, was so sad after the school district had, had gone the, all the whole route of, of getting consultants and trying to make sure they ga, had gauged public opinion correctly, only to find when it came down to the bottom line, they weren't going to vote for spending the money. So, it's, it just seems that perhaps we need to take the initiative first and say, this is what we need to do if we want, uh, if we want these things to continue in perpetuity. We need to, and then, and then try to build the support rather than wait for a consultant.
We'll have a work session scheduled sometime this year for the council to have that conversation and, and give the staff some direction. You mentioned something that I should also mention to the school board. Um, as part of the visioning process, there was one section that had to do with education and learning, and, uh, we have a lot of comments about education that we will need to share. I'll provide those to Andy. And the board may find some of those comments interesting and, uh, maybe instructive, I'm not sure, but, but the ones that deal with education in schools really should come to you.
Well, and can I, can I follow up on that too? Because this is something that really I see as just such a joint effort. Again, when we had our last joint meeting, I brought up Beaverton again because that was the first park and rec district in Oregon. And every high school in Beaverton now, the Parks, Park and Rec District has been able to put a swimming pool right next to the high school, and it's, uh, it's just such a huge community effort and joint, um, vision and then it's, so I, this is something I don't want the city to do pursue alone. I want to see this, I hope the school district will be as eager to do it as we are.
Well, when we met, uh, Jason Gakatru brought us lots of scenarios about how the district would look, city only, city plus a mile, city plus two miles. And there's a lot more to it than simply assuming that everybody paying for it now would love to be subsidized by new help and those that aren't paying for it now would want to. Uh, and it's a business model that goes well beyond the pool. I mean, it'd be one thing if we're creating a district just to pay for the pool, but presumably we'd be creating a Parks and Rec District that would pay for all of the city...
Right.
...facilities, which now are not being paid by a resident in a way that they necessarily know. I mean, they know what they're paying for the pool, the rest of it is being, you know, routed through different funds and, and they can't put a number value on it. So, there's a fair amount of work that needs to be done to...
Besides which, uh, I can totally understand why Scotts Mills would not want to be part of a city pool effort, but Scotts Mills would probably be very interested in a Park and Rec District if they were to have a benefit from it also, if that, that district would, that if money from town were going out to, to help their, facilitate their Park and Recs.
Nobody wants to do it more than I do.
Yeah, I know.
But it is going to take a consultant, as much as I hate that word, but just what you just said, I mean, does Scotts Mills want to pay for this or not? Or would they pay for X or Y or Z or none of it? I mean, we don't know, you know, if we draw the district boundaries for a ballot and inadvertently pack in a big proportion of the population that is going to vote no, then we've wasted our time.
Right. But more reason to make sure that the school board is, or the school, the school district is on board with the city.
Danny, did you have a...
Yeah, I think that, um, the, by virtue of the sheer size of the school district, I don't think it's, uh, it, it's very likely that we're going to convince the entire school district to come into this. And I'd like to, uh, kind of get a feel from school board members, uh, what their thoughts are on that and how far out they would, they think that it would be useful and would, would it, the Parks and Rec District, could that, uh, help to, to fund some of the, the playfields within the boundaries of that district? You know, not just the high school, uh, Pine Street fields and, and in-town fields, but I don't know, uh, Evergreen facilities or Bethany facilities. How far out does, would it go?
I think it depends what, what it covers. I was actually going to ask Kyle what the thoughts were as far as some of these agreements we just talked about with the school district, would, would those continue with the Parks and Rec? Um, so it's kind, I, I can tell you certainly within Marion County, um, children across the district within Marion County and even to, to some level outside of Marion County, send their kids in, in town for baseball and for swimming and, and whatever. So, it's really quite a broad area. Um, usually those maps for, for youth sports are drawn with, with school district lines.
And I don't think it, it's necessarily a matter of who's using the services, but who is generous enough to say that they've had them for ten years for free and they're willing to pay for them now.
Yeah.
And that's, that is the question.
Yeah.
But yeah, the assumption was always that, that where the city is now, the partner in those agreements, the district would be with, the, the rec district would be with the school district.
So, services would continue. This would be through different, Kennedy?
That was always...
That would, that would be my assumption.
Yeah, Dan, I think that's something the school board will probably have to discuss a little bit more. It's, I mean, we haven't, never, ever even talked about anything like this and given our recent, um, experience with bond amersures, I know what my opinion might be, but, um, but it, you know, it's probably depend, a lot depends how it's packaged and what the benefits are to the public out there. Like I've always said, there are, there are a lot of, you know, you talk about those, the kids' sports and things, that people bringing their kids into town all the time, that could be expanded a little bit.
It's very common. The, Rob's going to be though, we get those services for free now.
Yeah.
Why should, why should we pay for it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Because we can't keep...
City proper people, Rob.
We can't keep subsidizing you.
Yeah. I think that's, that's a tough one. It's a tough one to know where that would land. That's something that, you know, possibly could be, if, if in the next community survey, you know, the board can discuss what we might, questions we might want to have in there. And that could be something that you could put in, in the community's, well, but then you're only talking about the city of Silverton, right?
Well, yeah, and that's just it. I think that, uh, we've got to get a survey, we've got to get opinion from a wider audience than just city residents. Um, and how far out do you ask for that opinion? Do you ask for it through the whole Silver Falls School District?
Yeah.
And then how do you figure out who said no and yes and where that line is?
Well, it's complicated and I think that you do the survey based on zip code, which goes a little bit outside the city, but we'd have to know how that survey is done.
Yeah.
How to select the people who are going to receive the survey and might have to span the area. But there could be more than one question that involves this, the government first facility and then maybe outside too.
Yeah.
Probably something that needs more discussion and need to look at it a little deeper and...
So, you're not willing to commit right here and now to support it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much. I can't speak for the whole board, but, at all, but, um, that's something we would have to talk about ourselves and...
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't think that we have the details to share. What, I think the, the whole point of bringing this up here and now is that, uh, to, to see if there's, uh, a willingness to work together to move it forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, you agree or yes, you would?
I think that's something the board, I think that's something the board would have to discuss, you know, at our, on our own.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of needs for our schools also and how, how that, how Parks and Rec District would play in with that and our facilities needs across the district. You know, that's going to affect how people vote on things also. So, so I think it's just something the board, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but I think it's something that we have, would have to discuss.
I agree.
For ourselves and how that would play into our, our big picture type of thing, so.
You know, I'm curious, is there any similar-sized community that we're attempting to model this after that, uh, we can take a look and see what their path was, what the impacts were and how successful they were?
I can tell you right now that Beaverton was this size when this, the, the TV, um, Parks and Rec District was formed, um, because I was...
What year was that in?
It was nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen sixty-two.
Anything more relevant?
Well, it was a major, it was a major, major effort and it, on historically, I mean, if you ignore history and try to reinvent the wheel again, when we've got it...
It's the recent Beaverton group.
Right.
It's the what?
It's the recent Beav...
Please don't say that out loud. No, well, I kind of want this to happen. Beaverton was the same size as Silverton at the time.
Interesting.
Okay, other comments?
I mean, we can, Andy, we can maybe put this on, on the agenda for one of our work sessions, maybe next month or something or down the line.
Ken, just, I, just a recollection of when we, the last time we did try this, the proposed, the size of the proposed district was, let's just say it was very ambitious and the, the results from outside the city limits were particularly overwhelmingly in opposition. You know, and a lot of that is because of impacts agricultural land, and so, you're talking big parts of the land that they're, they're paying significant taxes on, and they look at, yeah, how much are they using, that kind of thing. So, that, that will, will still be a consideration, whether we significantly shrink the size. Uh, I, my thought is if you try and make the size of the school district, it blows up in your face.
Right.
Oh, of course, yeah.
That's what it was. But the, but the other thing is, and nobody's mentioned it, is, you know, we're in compression now and you create a new, a new district that impacts fire district, schools, city, library district, and everybody, everybody gets impacted by that. So, even if these two bodies are in total agreement on a plan, you've still got the fire district and the library district, it impacts everybody.
Of course, yeah.
So, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot more than just doing a survey of the taxpayers that would be impacted by it. You know, you probably want to start with your partners at fire and library and, and, because that's, that's a for real thing. And then you throw in the other needs that you mentioned, the schools got needs, bonding needs, you know, the city has got issues. So, there's other things out there and well, Park and Rec, I mean, it's, it's a wonderful concept and if you could sell it, great, but at the same time, you know, you can only go to the well so often and you've got to have your priorities together. What's, what's more important, the Park and Rec District or, you know, a school or a city hall, police com, I mean, it just, there's a lot of things out there that I think merit a whole lot more discussion, uh, before we get too far afield.
Yeah, I would totally agree with that, Ken, and that's one reason I was saying, I think that's something the board really needs to spend some time discussing because how it plays in and how it fits in with our visions and our other needs, so. Anything else on this?
Kyle, I think we need a little more detail on what the...
Yeah.
...scope is of the project before we...
Yeah.
Can really, really sink our teeth into it.
What the benefits would be, and yeah, very much so. Yeah. Other comments? Okay, um, update on the Slater Campus. Work began on, on the Slater Campus to convert it to Silverton Middle School last week. Andy, do you want to...
Sure. I brought this little man, you know, maybe more helpful to me to operate on your, some of your questions, but I'll give you a quick summary before I ask for questions. Jason, do you have a slide of, of the area? I'll, uh, refer to just a couple of things here. First of all, the, uh, I did bring a concept, I did bring a concept of, of a plan, uh, this is up to Slater Campus itself, and it'll actually house, it'll be a multi-purpose facility housing Silverton Middle School of approximately four hundred and fifty kids. It'll also house Community Roots Charter School of about ninety kids. Uh, they'll serve as a high school athletic football and, and track facility and of course will be used for, uh, community activities and events like it is now, so distinctly a multi-use facility. Uh, the contractors are on site, two K gene contractors out of Portland are the selected contractor, uh, and we've had some experience with that contractor, they do great work. So, we're pleased to have them back. Uh, they, they began about a week ago or so largely with, uh, uh, outside, um, efforts and excavation, removing a bunch of concrete. I've noticed that they have removed one of the greenhouses, which is part of the scope of work and are doing some excavation on the north part of the property now. There was some asphalt heading the other day for the installation of two fire hydrants on site, uh, in addition to some city water that'll be coming into another portion of the building. Asbestos abatement is now occurring and we'll hope to have that wrapped up relatively soon. Uh, and then once that is completed, uh, the, all the interior projects will begin to occur, some additions to walls, uh, windows, improvements, firelight safety improvements and other upgrades throughout the building. So, at the moment, uh, we are fully anticipating, um, completion of the project for opening of the school this August and to have the full movement of schools, because if you recall, this is probably more for the city council than it is for the school board, uh, but the ultimate goal is to vacate Eugene Field School, which this project allows. Uh, so, the Eugene Field students will be moving to Mark Twain, building a K-two school, some, some minor changes occurring to Mark Twain. Robert Frost School becomes the grades three, four, five campus, and then the Slater Campus becomes six, seven, eight along with Community Roots Charter School. Uh, we have, working with the city, completed, uh, the traffic impact analysis and doing everything possible to keep people away from this, this Pine Street and James Street intersection. We have the student drop-off and pickup, uh, on the east side of campus, southeast side of campus, and you can see with these arrows indicating where parents will drop their students off. There'll actually be a, a concrete area right here and an area for students to come in. The main entrance to the school will be here where the state's library... The main entrance to the school will be here where the state's library and cafeteria and the grayed out area portion of the building is, if you can visualize, this is the old two or three story portion that is, is, it will be entirely decommissioned and not used for any purpose at all. So, we'll have students occupying both sides of the, of the campus, this, the east side and then the gymnasium and all of the classrooms along the single story portion on the west side of the campus. Been working very closely with our architect, Joel Smallwood and a number of others to make this plan work and it's going to work. It's quite tight dime in order to make it work, but it's, it's going to work and it's going to serve us as a very functional outcome to help meet the needs of our middle school and community root school. So, that's, that's essentially where we are and everything's in a nutshell for you and we have, Jason, I don't know if there's anything that you want to share specifically up here, but we see Silverton High School and the middle school campus over here, the proximity to each other from a, from a functional logistical standpoint, there's actual benefits to that. Part being, we will be having additional opportunity to be able to use both campuses for similar purposes. As an example, our choir and band programs will be able to, will be able to move students back and forth rather than moving teachers back and forth, which has, which has a number of inherent curricular and instructional advantages to that. But at the same time, being so close, we also have sometimes students that are shared between campuses or middle school students that need, need access to more advanced coursework at Silverton High School, so we have a number of advantages from that standpoint as well. I'll answer any questions that you may have. Like I said, you may have more, more interest in specific questions that maybe you'll answer.
Mr. Chair. Andy, you have a question on the, when the middle school kids are getting out, are they going to be getting out at the same time as the high school?
No, the middle school kids will be getting out 15 to 20 minutes earlier than the high school kids to be certain that we don't have that concentration of traffic and if it's 20 minutes earlier than when the high school students come over in the fall to say for football practice and spring for track practice, the middle school kids, the majority of them will have already left campus.
Okay.
Again, trying to meet the needs of that multi purpose.
Yeah, I found it interesting today that traffic was backed up about 3:20 and 3:30 all the way down Water and onto James, almost to Pine Street, waiting for the light at sea. So, I think there will be some impact down there, but you think that's enough time to, to get that, most of that traffic out of there before the high school kids are out?
Well, based upon the traffic study, we believe it's, it's going to be operational. Keep in mind as well, Rick, that from the, from the school district standpoint, we have control over bus traffic and so our intent at this time, even though we've just published an RFP for a new transportation vendor, or a new contract, I should say, we're going to be working with the vendor and helping us bring bus traffic away even to the north side of campus as much as possible rather than bringing the buses to the south side. We think that'll help a little bit. You know, I'm not a traffic expert, while at the same time, I know that, that, that site and that school, you know, served about 1,250 kids at one time and along those, some of those narrow streets in that area. So, and I realize now we have a combination of the high school there as well, so it's, it's our anticipation that we're going to be able to control what we can as a school district, including some communication to parents for them to get away from those congested areas that may come to...
Right. That was going to be my next question is about the bus route, whether or not there's a way first student can alter the route so they're not taking the route, the buses right down at the same time as all the other traffic into downtowns.
Yeah, yeah, our, our intent is to direct them down Schleter, north on James and then over Jefferson or Hobart is that way and then back onto the highway back into town.
Okay, thanks.
Dana, did you have something?
I do. The, my same old question that I ask Andy every time I see him, robotics. Are you planning on providing a space for robotics here? Are you going to reestablish middle school, high school robotics?
Yes, and yes, all of the above, all of the robotics program, which thank you very much, being a year helping a few others to, to make that happen in our high school and our middle school. We have the equipment, it's actually stored at the district office right now, very organized away so we can get access to it. We currently have a teacher vacancy at the high school, a science teacher vacancy, and that person will begin in, in August. But even as part of the job posting for that position, it says preference given to those with robotics interest and experience and we have some very interested candidates in well-qualified areas of robotics. Middle school, we don't have any science vacancies, but we do have some interest at the middle school and I think what's going to happen is that we're going to keep identified areas at both the high school and middle school very likely and one of the large science classrooms that we're going to have to facilitate robotics, but it's, it's a planned.
Okay, thanks.
Kyle?
Just related to both schools, really, the council and, and at least Andy knows that I've been lobbied by a lot of neighbors about the parking on Florida and Grant. We used to have no student parking in a much bigger area on Florida. I don't know if it was ever on Grant, but it was altered when, when Schleter was decommissioned. But the neighbors on Florida are asking the city to put no student parking districts back in place fully on Florida and on the part of Grant that we are able to do and so, I don't know if that, when we're going to talk about that, Bob, but I know you mentioned it might come up tonight, so I just made it come up tonight. I like you to be good to your word. But that's definitely something, I know on the council level, there's some enforcement issues and whether we can write a ticket for enough money to make it worth doing, but there are definitely, and Andy can speak to this, at least what's been told to me, is there's a parking shortage at Pine Street and kids just are ignoring the school and the district's efforts to have them not parked there, apparently.
Yeah, the problem for the city, not only the cost of the signs and maintaining the sign, but also applying for parking where you should, there's only $5 and it just would always be a low priority for the police department. Former chief of police, who will remain in this unless he wants to speak up.
I don't know who that...
Tells me that in the past, there was cooperation between the city and the school district where someone was... And then you should talk about this.
Yeah, the, I think it was about 2000 or 2001 when that Florida street area was designated no student parking, the high school security people were doing some enforcement out there and I think it only took about three or four days and the kids put parking there. So, I don't know if that would be anything that would be of interest, it might help the police department now a little bit, but are the, are the students issued permits? Parking permits?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know some of the overflow parking now, some kids have been parking down...
At Schleter.
At Schleter along the, on the base, by the baseball fields in that parking area down there.
Yeah, and they even park on that old parking lot by the old, where the redwood trees were, you know, in the main parking too. See a lot of parking there.
So, that, I mean, that could be something this, this school could do there to encourage kids to, to park in those designated areas rather than on the streets.
The problem for the police is knowing who's driving the car that's parked there. You have people with permits or something, those have to be displayed, you'd have a much easier time enforcing the city parking rule than the police would have trying to control parking on either of those two streets.
The kids have permits that they hang, usually hang on their rearview mirror, but if they're parking on the street, maybe they take them off. I don't know. So, but that's something that I see Andy taking notes, so that's something I'm sure we can address or work on.
Yeah, it's interesting, there's no easy solution to this and...
No, there isn't.
If you just compare the size of the available parking, and I heard, I've mentioned that, you know, there's, parking is full, but if you take a look at the size of the parking lot at the high school and compare that to the former student parking lot at Schleter and then a little bit along James, the available parking at, at Pine Street is pretty significant and more than what was ever available at the old high school. I know there were problems around the old high school as well with parking in some of the adjacent streets. The other contributor to this is $2 a gallon gas or less. And, and it's March, right, and more kids are getting their licenses and it happens nearly every year, we see an increase in student drivers this kind of year. So, while we don't have the perfect solution, it does become worse as you hear it progress.
Just to respond to the chair's comment, the high school is telling them to park at Schleter.
They are, that's correct.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's right. And, and from the kid's standpoint, if they see a city parking spot that they can pull in a place that's unregulated, guess where they're going to park.
Yeah, it's closer to the school.
Can I, can I ask a question? Can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, well, this, did you, somebody else, or?
Go ahead.
This is going back to the Schleter Campus. I was just wondering, I try to stay as well informed as I can just from Aratown and everything, what's going on, but I really wasn't, I'm really still not sure about how that, so the old gymnasium, which we were always told was so seismically challenged, how is that being used or?
We've never discontinued using that, that gymnasium and, or the mezzanine, it continues to be, was continued to be used even after the high school was completed. We use it for athletics, so it was even part of the, of the development, to agreement at the time, with the agreement that we wouldn't put a maximum of 150 people in the building at any one time beyond where it's currently being used for middle school or high school athletics in the area. So, that, that gymnasium has never stopped.
Laura, are you thinking of Eugene Field much later?
No, no, I'm...
You're talking about the areas that used to be a gym, a million, millions?
No, I always was, I always understood that the gymnasium itself had real seismic issues.
Oh, I, I think there are some seismic, not crazy, it could occur just about every building and I just include in that gymnasium, but the seismic concerns are in the two and three story brick portion of the building.
I know that too, I mean, that old freshman hall. The old gym, but, but...
The old gym is the three story portion and it's in bad shape.
Okay, okay, so I maybe, all right. And, but what is the, what is that being, going to be used for then? And how are you outreach to the community? I'm just, I mean, how, people, I don't think people really know what's going on and they don't, I'm not sure how they access the information about exactly what is happening there.
Well, we have some information on the website, it doesn't be updated as well and we do updates at school board meetings, but as far as any active outreach about scheduling and things like that, it's just what we put on the website. People can surely refer to that and get information.
Okay, thank you, I'll do that.
Chief Fosheim, you had a comment about the parking issue?
Yes, the one thing I'm concerned about when it comes to parking, restricting traditional parking on Ford Street is we do not want to push the kids onto parking onto Pine Street, which is an arterial. It's narrowed already, but that, the kids are smart and if you create a no parking zone on Florida, they're going to find somewhere else near Pine Street for the park and walk school. So, we have to take that into consideration also.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other questions or comments about this?
Well, the only thing I would add is, you know, we talked about the tags, they hang in front of the window and of course they put them away when they park on Florida. The simple solution is just like Schmeckert does, you get a sticker for your windows and you can't, you can't put that away. It's on here, it's, you know, good for you.
But that's hard if you got to switch cars though, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like say, you know, cars in the shop or...
Sometimes kids don't always, if families have more than one car, a kid might drive one car one day and another car the next day.
So, you put them on each car. I mean, that's what we do at Schmeckert, if, I can put them on both my cars, if, if I don't know which one I'm going to take, I'm going to go over to the campus.
I think it's probably going to be the burden on us to police it, you know, it's going to be on the school district and the security to, to police that and to take care of it.
Are we on, on Ford or Grant, are kids that can't get permits? So, if you have to make your permit a slot and so it's those kids who can't, they're either on the waitlist or, or so far on the waitlist that...
Probably, and I don't see it being...
Residential permit would be the thing to get, so the residents have their permits and anybody that doesn't have that tag on there.
And as of right now, I don't think it's a huge, huge problem. I take my daughter to school probably two to three days a week and, you know, come through Florida every morning. I don't see it being a huge problem right now. I mean, it could be, but I, I think they're doing a good job of staying out of that neighborhood.
All the, the neighbors are complaining.
They are?
I mean, I've got two calls already and...
Is it because one car parked in front of somebody's house or is it like significant?
No, they say it's significant.
Okay.
It, it may be worthwhile, high school, do you do a little, maybe patrolling right before school starts?
Yeah.
Just to monitor for a little bit?
Yeah.
I don't know.
But yeah, it's going to come back to our security team.
Yeah.
Taking the check out there.
The key, the key time is before school starts.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It's going to be on us.
And one thing we can also stress to the junior high parents is to park in the parking lot when they come to the school rather than, you know, if they're coming to the school and staying for some reason, not to park up on the street, but to stress to them because the junior high kids won't be driving, so. So, I can't see a whole lot of extra parking, we just have to regulate, you know, kind of regulate where the parents are going to be parking for the junior high and the high school kids too, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay, does anybody have anything, any other topics they'd like to bring up? Laura?
Well, one, the, the governor just signed the, the annexation, annexation bill, their local entities can no longer restrict annexations through, because of initiatives. And so, that could mean a big impact on the district too as if developers develop, there's no, there's no voter, voter agreement that has to be taken into consideration. I was wondering if that's, if, I mean, that could be an impact on the schools if a lot of, if there are annexations that are, we can't turn down.
Currently, most annexations have to be approved by the voters and in some cities, it's in the charter, the annexations have to go to the voters, but that was, there's a, a new law that was passed and signed by the governor that takes that option away from cities, so there may be more annexations because here in Silverton, all of the annexations referred to the voters failed. There was never one that passed and so that, the number of annexations that are approved could increase as a result of that law.
So, who's governing the annexation now if the local municipality is not going to vote it in?
Well, it's a city council, it's a planning commission, city council decision, they can't defer to the voters.
Okay.
They have to decide and there are rules about whether to approve or deny the application.
And they can only be denied on very specific grounds. I think that cannot, there's no arbitrary...
Yeah, the voters could vote no on an annexation for whatever reason they felt like, but...
There's certain parameters.
The city council will have to follow the state rules.
Whether you like it or not, you have to follow the rule, you have to, it can't be just because we don't want it here.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to ask was about Eugene Field. So, the, I've had a lot of, a lot of people have asked about if I knew anything, which I don't, but that if it's on the market, if there's can be, if there's going to be any kind of control over, besides zoning requirements, over what, what kind of facility goes in there?
The, the school board approved a reservation in January to discontinue use of the school effective December 31st, 2016. So, that begins the process for making the property available for sale. We're currently seeking a broker to assist the school district in, in making it available for sale and we've had an appraisal of the property, I've been feeling as well. So, with all that information, I'm no real estate expert and based upon some of the properties that we've sold in, in the past, however, I recall really a pretty minimal influence that the seller can have on what the property is used for. You know, my sense, if I had to speculate, would be that a person that wanted to, let's say, develop the Eugene Field site, property for some commercial development or other development that would fit within the rules of the city specific for that property, that in that occupancy would really be the regulating rules that we'd have to rely upon rather than the school district having any final say in that. I think the school district, of course, wants to be a, a good player and partner in, in all of this and hopefully will have someone that comes in there and is, is able to use the property for a noteworthy purpose that supports the community as we can.
I think the school district's primary interest is going to maximize the revenue that they get from that site. I would agree, they have very little to say about how it would be used, but that's more an issue for the planning commission and the city council. If we are interested in a certain kind of mixed development, then we need to put some incentives into our development code for that kind of development for that site. Jason, is that something that's been discussed with the planning commission and the council or not? So, if that's an issue, you might under council discussion next Monday ask if there's interest in having the staff bring back what those options might be, but you'd have to tell us what kind of development that you want for that site.
Anything else? Anybody have any other topics they'd like to bring up? Okay. Okay. So I'd like to thank the city council for joining us here tonight. This is always a good thing to do, I think, to kind of rub heads together and just to discuss things that we have for mutual benefit. So we're going to adjourn this portion of the meeting. The school district is going to, the school board is going to stay in this, in this room to continue our work session. And I believe the city council is going to go over to a room at the library to continue theirs. So thank you for coming, everyone, and we're adjourned for now.